Welcome to another session of our Kubernetes study session. And today, we're going to be finishing finishing out the application lifecycle management. And we got secrets left, multi containers and initiation containers in the containers. We should be able to glide right through them. So go ahead and get started with the secrets. For the secrets, these are going to be your credential files that you're going to be wanting to store on your cluster in a in a encrypted manner. They usually come encoded, but you can also encrypt them, but you have to do a little bit more work for that. You have to create an encryption, what is it called? In a encryption configuration file that then you're able to use to encrypt the secrets. But the significance of this is that they're usually encoded, meaning that if somebody is able to get the encoded version, they can just decode them. It's pretty simple to decode them. It doesn't take any time at all. So, yep. Anything else? As we go through this, I'll show you that also that when you store the secrets, when you attach the secrets to your containers with the env from module, it actually creates them as environmental variable on on the on the container, which you might want to consider that as they will be visible there as well. Alright, we can go ahead and jump right into it. Does anybody know how we can find out how many secrets exist on this system? Can just take a guess.
Well, describe.
Describe config maps.
I would say is the get.
Yeah, get secrets maybe.
Get is going to be your command to always find the the resources and how many of them are there. Describe is going to give you more information on a specific resource. So let's go ahead and get secrets. They did not specify, it says in current current namespace, so we don't have to add that. And as you can see here, we only have one secret. Not one secret, as you'll see here shortly, can have multiple credentials inside of it. So how many secrets are defined inside of that secret? And for that one, Pat, you said earlier.
Describe.
Yep, describe the secret. And here's our secret and we get out, yep. Service account token and each shot, each secret, each credential is in here is going to be in a key and value. And you cannot see him here for these guys. But these are going to be secrets.
So question is that is that token temporary or is it static?
So this is just a secret file. He still has to, it's technically not in use at the moment. It has to be attached to each container that you're going to have it used on. As far as this file, it is, there's no kind of a timeout or anything, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I thought he had a lifetime, you know, sometimes you can get credentials that are temporary.
Yep.
So I was curious.
I see what you mean. Yeah, there's at least in this configuration, there's no kind of timer set configured. That might be something that we'll learn later on. We've got three secrets here. I just look at the the colons. Quick way to see how many secrets we got.
Now, I was about to say, Des, can you show me like where where you got like the three secrets, where where it says?
Yeah, so ca cert is one secret. As you can see, this is the key and the value is the 570 bytes. Name space is the next one.
Okay.
Token is the last one.
Okay, so three. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And what type of secret is this? It says right here, type Kubernetes I O service account token. Okay. And which of the following is not secret data that is defined in the dashboard token? And yeah, pretty much, which one of these is not one of these secrets? And that's going to be your type. Alright, here comes the fun stuff. We're going to actually get get to use these secrets. So they created us this application right here. As you can see, it cannot connect because we don't have the correct secrets in there. They are not set. And it's looking for the environment variables in that container. That's showing that we're going to be using that env from command. Alright. So the reason the application fails is because we have not created the secrets yet. Create a new secret named db secret with the data given below. You may follow one of the methods discussed in the lecture to create a secret. So there's two ways we can create the secret. We could create it declaratively or imperatively. Declaratively, we're creating the file. I know how to do it imperatively, so let's go ahead and follow the how we would find out how to do it imperatively. Or declaratively. So come over here to the to our documentation, let's go over to secrets. Kind secret data. So this file. Pretty simple. Let's look up more references here. And we always can search kind secret. Well, here's how we would add a name to it. This is probably the best version that we get. Okay. So come over here, key or vim. DB dash secret. The YAMO. Paste that in. And we're just going to add our specifications. They wanted a name db secret. Give us a type. Let's find out what types are. Let's go with a pick here. Any questions on what I'm doing so far?
Looks like you're setting up a container, right?
At the moment, I'm setting up the secret. We would then have to attach it to the container so the container has access to it. The containers, just just like the config maps, the containers do not have default access to the secrets that are stored in your Kubernetes.
Got you. So this is all related to setting up just a secret?
Correct.
Interesting.
Let's go ahead and see if that works. Do a key create and use the secret file we just created. Oh, I named it wrong. That's okay. There, you want to be able to put for. Oh, so we have to. Looks like we have to encode the data first. Do it this way. And to encode the data. And I go sequel one. Decode data. Now I know how to do the encoding, but I was curious if they they have it in here. Yeah. Let's go ahead and just encode it here. Do an echo. And sequel oh one. Please sixty four. Now, last one is going to be password one, two, three. And the reason why I said earlier that is this is not a secure way because you can't just, I believe it's a dash decode. That works. Is sixty four. The There you go. So yeah, you can just decode this on any system. And it's pretty simple to do so. So not recommended to leave them as this. You best actually encrypt it. But we're not going to be getting into that in this lesson. Go ahead and copy that. Let's try that one command again to create this file. Here it is. It's There's our secret called db secrets. Let's see if it takes it. Alright, it does take it. But let's go ahead and go through the imperative way to create the same secret as well. Okay, destroy. Delete. We can do key create. Secret. Generic. Then we're going to have the name of the secret, which in this case is going to be db secret. And is this is it's almost outside of the generic, it's almost like creating a config map where it's going to want there from literal to add those. And we could just copy and it encodes it for us. In that sense, it is easier to do this way. Just like that, we have our secret. Can't test it again, but that does work. It creates the same exact secret. Secret opaque. Maybe it's opaque as well. I was curious about that. Alright, so now we need to load the this secret file into the pod so that it can access this the secrets in here. And just like config maps, we can specify which secretly has access to, or we can add the whole secret file to it. In which case, in this case, we're going to be adding the whole secret file to the container. So you'll have access to all the secrets in there. Okay. Let's go ahead and do, we're just going to edit the the pod. And we can come over here, secrets. Search. Kind. But And the reason why I search kind pod is because we know we're trying to create a pod and it just narrows it down quicker. So it's not here. Check data. This is what we're looking for. This is the one we want that injects the whole file as an environmental variables. Don't forget, we want to keep the same exact spacing. So you see it's right under name. Drop around the name as well. Let's see what turns out. I know what happened. I should have not had any spacing before doing that. But yeah, so looks good. Just going to adjust the name here, match it to our secret. Be the secret. Okay, and with something like this, we have to recreate the whole pod. And that's what we're using the dash dash force command. That's recreates the whole pod. And we can grab the temporary file that it created for us with the new configuration. And we're just going to recreate it, the pod with the new configuration. Any questions so far? On stuff.
Think you're there or there.
Uh, no. No errors. That's from a previous, the access from my previous error.
Yeah.
It's kind of cool that they have these. I'm wondering what what mod is that? What program does this, these axes and arrow, green arrows? I um, I want to just confirm that that is the case that it was added there. Can do a describe on the part that we just replaced. It's running and here's our db secret is one is environment environmental variables. So should be good. Okay, likes it. And now that is, let's refresh and success. It's able to authenticate those credentials that we gave it. Although it's interesting, it still says.
So a quick question. So you authenticate into this, to these pods. This is just to manage them, right? Pretty much.
Yeah. Can you elaborate on that question?
Yeah, what I mean is so you get, you know, you're assigning the secrets to a pod. Let's see a multiple. It's really for you as the administrator to manage the pods, right? It's not like, I guess my thought process is you doing this for you to be able to access the pod and do things to it, correct? This is not for the user. This is not for users.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not going to be for a user, but it's going to be for like applications that need credentials that that that's what you would use it for. Now, the user would not have to come in the backside of this and put in credentials this way.
Yep.
Okay. That's it. That's all we got for the secrets. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to jump into our multi container pods. And the purpose of these pods is going to be more of like a, they're going to play the monitoring or connecting role, pretty much like sidecars. Is that is the name I've heard used for them. And so think about it, if you have an application and then you want to monitor, have like pull the the logs for the application. Or even if you just want to if you want to manage how it connects to the internet. Alright, but yeah, you will create another container inside of the same pod that those those that does those extra functions on the side by side, the main application container. Does that make sense?
So say that again one more time.
There's there's certain scenarios where you would want to have multiple containers inside of one pod. And these containers would have would serve a purpose of either networking or monitoring your main application. So you would have the main application running in its own container. And then a sidecar that would then do those extra functions, but they would run on the same pod.
Got you.
Okay.
So something like a microservice in a way?
Yeah. Usually you, we, the way we set them up is we had run into them in another conversation. We use the hyphen to declare that it's a new container that's being created in a pod, but I'll show you what that actually looks like. So you can have some visual representation. Alright, so let's identify the number of containers created in the red pod. Now, do you guys remember how we would get more information on the pod red?
Hey, describe.
There we go. Describe pod red. Alright, so here we have the the pod itself. Here are all these containers. We can see the containers are separated by the if you look at the spacing. These are the different containers. So we got apple, wine and scarlet in here. So we got three containers inside of this pod. Okay, define the name of the containers running in the blue pod. And this time I'm gonna do it a little bit differently, just so I can show you something. Uh, we're just gonna edit the blue pod. We can look at how the YAML looks. And as you can see here, we have our pod and we have our spec here for the containers. And each one that starts with a hyphen is a separate uh, container. So we have our container up here called teal. So you can see named teal. So this all is one container. And then this is the second container in here. Is, is that clear?
Could you repeat that for me again, Dan?
Yeah, um, so when you're writing your YAML configuration file for your multi container pods. The way that Kubernetes is gonna know that this is the start of one container and the end of the other one is by the hyphen that is on the same level as containers. So it's on the same column. So as you can see here, th- this command here is the start of the first container. It is, it's signified by this hyphen right here. As you come down, the next, the next row that has the hyphen in the same column, because this is a list. Uh, there's gonna be this command right here. So everything after this command is the second container. Does that make sense?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, perfect. So they asked for the names. We have our first name here teal, our second name here navy. So teal and navy. Okay, create a multi container pod with two containers. Use the spec given below. If the pod goes into crash loop, and I think it does, so we're, we're just gonna off the, off the rip, we're gonna add the sleep command to the lemon container. So. Let's get started. The way I have been doing this, and there might be an easier way to do this, but this is the way I know how to do it, is I just create the first pod with one container. And then we can add the second container afterwards. Well, we, we're gonna create a YAML file. From our imperative command. So then we can add it to that and declaratively create the pod afterward. Not sure what I mean by that. So first, we're gonna be do, creating our lemon, our yellow pod with a lemon container. And we're gonna do that. Imperatively. So we're gonna do a K, create. Pod. I think we could just do a run. Key run, pod. Key run, name of the pod is gonna be yellow. And image is gonna be busy box. And by default, it's gonna create the new, the first container named yellow, and we can just change that afterwards. And we're gonna do a dry run. Client side. And we want our output to be YAML. And we're gonna put it into a file called yellow that YAML. So what this does is gonna create our yellow pod with the image busy box. And dry run means it's not actually gonna create, it's just gonna see if it can create it. And the output that we're gonna use is YAML, so it's just gonna create a YAML output instead of actually creating that pod. And we're gonna pipe that or send that over to our yellow that YAML file that it's gonna create for us. So let's go ahead and do that. Now we can come into our yellow file. And here's our container that we, the pod that we just created. Don't forget, we gotta change this name because we want the first pod. Oh, not that name, sorry. The first container we wanted to be named lemon. According to the specs on this side here, container one is gonna be named lemon. Busy box image, that's good. And as you saw earlier, we're gonna signify that a new container, oh, well, before we do that, let's add our command. Do you guys remember how we add the, how we type the syntax for our commands here? No worries, um. It's gonna be um, same thing. It's also a list, so we're gonna signify it by a hyphen here. And sleep. And the first item in the list is gonna be your entry point. Uh, which is the actual command. And then the second one is gonna be your arguments, which is gonna modify the command. Thousand. So that looks good to me. Okay, so now we want to start our second container. Hyphen. It looks right. And a name. The order here doesn't matter. It's gonna, Kubernetes is gonna reorganize this when he actually creates this uh, this pod. The only thing that matters is that the hyphen is the start of the new container. Name. I want to name gold. And image. Redis. That looks good to me. She's easy. Okay, create. Dash F, yellow. Okay, describe. Alright, let's take a look at what we got going on. It is running. Lemon. Image is busy box and the second one is called gold. And the image is redis, so that should work. Perfect. Alright. So they have deployed an application, a login application called Elastic Stack, and we're gonna get into how it works. Okay. Okay, so let's go over to Kibana. In fact, that was um. Okay, just edit this out, but that was uh, one of the specifications for one of those jobs that you posted earlier is Kibana. But this is what it is. It's a login application. And as you can see here, it's asking us to add log data because there is none. We got nothing here. Dashboard. Show lives. Discover is what it was. Yep. Much indicated. No files. Yep. Okay, so let's go into configuring this thing. Should be good here. Break the app pod and identify the number of containers in it, so. Okay, get pods. So a new pod is app. Okay, describe. App. So here we have our app. Just an event simulator, and what they want us to do is add our sidecar to this, which is gonna monitor this and send the logs to Kibana here. So you can have a visual representation of these logs. Of course, we can uh. Key get. Key log. Can also do this to get the logs. But we want to have, we don't want to have to go into here, like the user's not gonna want to go in the backend and look at this. They want to see it from the UI gooey here. So let's get that to work. Expect a pod and different number of containers in it. We saw there was only one container in there. The application output logs, few logs, I tried to define the user having issues with logging in. So if these logs are here, uh, we can see user five here, but let's uh, do it the right way. Can just take these and grab. Dash I, we're looking for login issues. There we go. User five is having issues authenticated too many attempts. Five. Edit the path to add a sidecar that sends logs to Elastic Search. And mount the log value to a sidecar container. Only add the new containers, so. Let's go ahead and, we're just gonna edit that pod. Pod. Pretty much we want to add another pod here. Alright. With a hyphen to signify that it's a new container. And the one that's named. Sidecar. And that image is gonna be. Cool cloud file be configured. And they also want us to mount it, mount uh. The volume out here. That should be all the configurations for the sidecar. And we want to keep the old container app, which is here. And it's image. Peer simulator. So that looks good to me. I think it's gonna ask us to, yep, to recreate this pod. So okay, create, key replace, red dash dash four, so it recreates it. As it deletes it and creates a new version of it. And we're gonna use our temporary file that it gave us, what I saved changes. Alright, now wait. Uh, does anybody have any questions uh, so far?
Not for me.
Ooh, cool. See what happens to our app while it's recreating it. Just think, just to access it. Pod app is invalid, spec container value minus required value. Sounds the. Not found. I misspelled it. Pod was deleted, so we just have to edit our config here. Value mounts. Oh, we're missing the name. Okay. Yep. Yep, that should be fine. And let's go ahead and. Recreate dash F. Alright, easy, easy peasy. Yep, should cover everything. Container name sidecar. The image. It is there. They configured log value. Sounds. Interesting. Let's see, is it getting our logs? The pod, add a sidecar container, send logs to Elastic Search, mount the log volume to sidecar container. It looks good to me, but we can go ahead and recreate it. Kind of feeling is from there is because of the way we created that uh, pod. Try it again. Go ahead and skip these, I mean. One. Three. Two and Navy, I think. Alright, let's try this again. Key edit. Add app. Image is gonna be co-cloud configured. Name. Sidecar. And our volume mounts. Name. Check everything. Let's see. Same issue. Let's see, what am I missing? Oh, have I been muted this whole time?
Yes, you were.
Nice. So. I found out the issue. Uh, the issue is. They switched up the namespace on us and I am assuming it's in one of these other ones that I, they mentioned the namespace. Uh, I don't know where, but it wasn't mentioned in this, in the actual question here. As far as I can see. But yeah. We just had to change the namespace, so now let's do the same command, K, get pod A. Make sure that the one in the elastic stack namespace has two. So that should work. And let's go ahead and refresh this. Over. Yeah, now we're getting logs. Okay. And we've went over the namespaces in the past. The namespaces uh serve as a way to separate the workspaces. So therefore, if I am working on an app in the default namespace. Uh, there, those changes do not affect the app in the elastic stacks namespace. Yeah, so that, that's what that's what was getting us. I just made the change to the, to our configuration file. To add the namespace elastic search. Yeah, we're all set. And the next one is. Yeah, so now, once you, you're able to get those same. Those same um. Logs that we've seen earlier, we can get them in here in the app. These are four, uh, let's see, can we search here? I have not used this app before. Yep, search, login. As you can see, it is a lot more user friendly. User five failed to log into the account. You don't need to really know Linux to do this. Alright. That is all that we have for multi-container pods. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, cool.
Alright.
No questions for me.
Fun stuff, fun stuff. Well. Our last guy for today is going to be our init containers. Initial, I call them initialization Containers, because that's what they are. They initialize your workspace before the main application gets deployed. So you will see this um. Uh, you'll see it in a second when I show you, but um. It, it, it works the same as uh multi-containers. But it's just a different version of a container. In this case. This container has to start and complete. And by completing, I mean it's going to terminate. Uh, as we mentioned previously. The containers are set up to run a specific task. Uh, once the task is complete. Their container terminates. In the case of application pods or the case of application containers. They are set to run whatever the application is. Therefore, as long as that application is running under container, the container will not terminate. But in the case of init containers. Whatever task you set for it. We're going to be just using this sleep command on this, on these ones. Once the sleep commands completes, it's going to exit out that container. Does that make sense?
So, since, since, sit down again a diff.
Yeah, I was going to say, can you say that again for me?
Yeah. So. I'm gonna just say the init container itself. It's a separate container on a pod, as we saw earlier with the two containers. But it is different from a regular container in the sense that. It will run and complete its task and then terminate. Before the other containers can start. Once it completes, the other containers can start. In the case of just regular multi-container pods, all containers start at the same time. Does that make sense? But yeah, but I'll show you in action here, so you can see, you could have a visual representation. It, it'll, you'll click easier. So I definitely put the pod that has an init container configured. Let's do a K, get. Pods. Uh, from this. So init containers are not gonna, you're not gonna see them here. This is going to be just your regular containers. So. This is not going to mean that it's the actual init container that's there. So we're going to actually describe these. So let's do a describe. Pod. She scrub all of our pods, yep. So let's go from the top, red. As we can see here, for the red container, we just have our containers. The init containers for green. No init containers, but there is two green containers, as you can see here, containers. And here on the blue. We see one called init uh, a spec called init containers. So this is going to be your init container here. And what I mean by this, as you can see, it is completed and it's terminated, it's in a state terminated. While the container here is running. This container here has a command of sleep five. It's, it's pretty much going to create, what, what Kubernetes is going to do, when it creates this pod. It is going to create this init container in the pod. And then it's going to do the command here called sleep five, which is gonna, is gonna wait five seconds. Once that five seconds is up, it completed its task. And it terminates this container and then it can start the regular containers. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so it's like a parent, child, or master. I guess the init container.
Yeah, it's, I, I, I call it initialization Container. It's uh sets up the environment for, you use it to set up environments for your. Main container. Or to check things before creating the main container. Oh yeah, um, so we're gonna say this is going to be our. Blue container, or blue pod. What is the image used by the init container on the blue pod? And we can see here, the image we use is busybox. What is the state of the init container on pod? The state is terminated. And why was it terminated? The process completed successfully. Which we can see right here. Okay. We just create a new app named purple, how many init containers does it have? So let's go ahead and describe pod purple. Looking at this, how many can, init containers do you think it has?
Init containers. I see nothing, zero.
So there's actually two here. We can see up here. It's going to be the start of the init containers uh configuration.
Because it says warm up one and two, so I'll say two.
Yep, there you go. Those, those are going to be your init containers.
Ah, got you, got you, got you.
And it's all about the spacing. Yeah, so let's go ahead and give him two. And what is the state of this pod? And you gotta, they asked for the pod and not the containers. And we can see the containers are running. But the pod itself is in a pending state. And that is because the pod is waiting to. When does this sit, does it sit here? Yep, it does. It's going to go off of the actual application pod, which is going to be, uh, application container. It's not looking at these um init containers. And as you can see here also, it does go in order. Um, it runs through the first init container. And the second init container is actually waiting for this first one to complete before it starts. So yeah, uh, we are in a pending state. How long after the creation of pod will the application come up and be available for users? For this, we just need to add our minutes here, or, because we have this one set to 10 minutes. And this one is set to 20 minutes. Uh, it's going to run through both of them before it actually creates the actual application. So we got 30 minutes. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Alright, so now they want us to update the pod red to use init containers that uses busybox image and sleeps for 20 seconds. Delete and recreate if we have to. It's not asking us for a namespace this time, so we won't get cut up this time. So let's go ahead and just start editing. We just jump right into edit, pod, red. Do what we got here. Container. So it looks like there's no init containers on here to begin with, so. As always, we jump over to our. Documentation, new container. And. But. Should be simple enough. And it starts at the same level as containers. So. We can go ahead and actually. Here. That paste. And they wanted to be pod named red. Nick container, new container is going to be using busybox image. We don't specify a name for it, so. I'm gonna just keep that same name. But they do want us to give it a command. Sleep. And they want us to sleep for 20 seconds. Container that uses busybox. And is the, it works the same way as container as far as, it's a list that gets separated by the hyphens here. So this are going to be our first container, init container. If we wanted to add another one, we would just add. It's create a new row and have a hyphen and whatever we want to do with the second container. We're not going to do that here. So let's go ahead and run this. We'll have to recreate, replace the. Of course. Use a temporary file that he gave us. And also. And I'm gonna do a, a watch command afterwards, so we can watch that, how after 20 seconds it's gonna recreate it for us. Yeah, pods. W. And as you can see, this got purple, we got 30 minutes before it creates it, so. We're not going to be waiting on that one, but this red guy. After 20 seconds, it should create. The new dip container, as you can see here. 22 seconds. It's a little bit longer than the 20 seconds, just by here, but yeah. Now it is running. Check. Good stuff. Before I move on, any questions on that? Before I move on, any questions on that? Alright. Describe orange. Let's see what they got for us. So orange is in a pending state. And an init container here that terminated with an error. Sleep, well. Can I see what the issue is? Okay, this is gonna be an easy one. So here is our init container here. Does anybody see an issue with this configuration? Hopefully, I didn't give it away already.
Well, it's not written correctly, right? On the right format?
There's something not written correctly that is correct. Just just read through it and it's kind of obvious.
Question is.
Is it the name?
But he here's our init container that I have highlighted here on the right side.
Uh huh.
Just read through this command.
Oh, the sleep, 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 sleep. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So yeah, our sleep is uh misspelled. So let's go ahead and delete the extra E's.
And you gotta put it in parentheses. I mean, yeah, quotation marks for it. Uh huh.
This is yellow.
In this case, it's fine. Um.
Oh, I see what she's saying, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It has to be in quotes. I believe in this case, it's okay.
Yeah.
Because of the way they have it, because it's a it's a it's passing in a command through like you can see here. It's a shell and then commence sleep two. It's just they're writing it differently than the way I usually put it in. Now, I would usually just not have the shell in the C. I would just have, yeah, as a like a the it's kind of like a. How Docker does it? I just have the sleep as the entry point and then two as the arguments.
Mm hmm.
Uh, in the in that case, you do need the the quotes. In this case, I don't believe you do. But we we could come back and fix it if we do.
So every command gets a new line. That's why it's got a hyphen in front of it. It gets to force it to be a new line. Just trying to understand that format.
The hyphen ma- means that it's a list.
Um, that's that's interesting, though. It's like every line was a list.
It's the way it's the way Docker container reads it. Um, there's another um, there's another study. Um. Lesson that I that was in here that showed the way that it checks for it. And it's just it checks it. But you would just put it as a a list where the first object in that list is gonna be your entry point. Then everything after that is gonna be your argument. But yeah, I mean, I'm not I'm not an expert on that one. We can definitely look into it after. After we get this thing rolling. Okay. Replace. Of course. The file here. And text. It's quick. Yep, and thus this time it completed. It's running. Yeah. This case, yeah, we didn't need to. And now it doesn't have those hyphens. Yeah, we'll look into it. Right now. There's some time, so let's uh let's go over some docs. Fun stuff. Um. Commands. There you go. Find a command. There's like ve- there's many different ways that you can do it. So in this case, this is this what I mean, that it's a list. That you can have the command and argument separate. Whereas they have them out as a list. Or you could just do the dash underneath that it is. Represents this.
Mm hmm.
Um. And my understanding, I hope I hope that it says somewhere in here. That's how Docker reads it. Control file not working today. And this is where you run as a shell, so your entry point becomes your shell. And then your arguments is the dash C. And whatever command that you have, see the command is a is its own um. What you call the? Array? Is that a proper way to say it? Yeah, I think so. But yeah, it's uh.
I mean, the raise a list. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it's pretty much a list, almost, you know, similar to Python list.
I I don't I don't have an answer for you was why it is set as a list.
Yeah, I guess it's probably have more instructions. So for each line, you could take more arguments, right? Or more things within the array?
Yeah, yeah, each line it means is the new. It's it's like a delimiter. So it's it's gonna be like your comma in that in that list. So yeah, that that's a easy way to think about it is these hyphens are like the comma in a list.
Gotcha.
So when you have your different uh container specs. So there's gonna be. The specs for this and think about it like there's a comma and then your container starts. That's what these hyphens mean.
Yep.
But do we get anything here? Exec V. I don't know. Have you heard of exec V? It's a Linux thing by the looks of it. I'll look more into it later on, and if I have anything else for you, like I'll I'll bring it up in the next in our next lesson, but.
No worries.
Uh, any questions as far as in initiation containers in it containers? Alright. I mean, with that. We're gonna finish out our lessons for today. As always, if you're watching the replay and you found this information valuable, please like and subscribe. If you're looking to join us here and ask questions, just shoot me a message on LinkedIn. I have the link down in the description. Thank you for watching and I'll see you on the next one.